For invocation, does anybody want to do it?
I'll pray.
Put your worship.
All right, I'll put that down here. Levi, you got the pledge. Okay, looks like we're on there. So, good evening, and for those that are watching, welcome to the January 12th, 2023 Xenia City Council Regular Meeting. At this time, we will have an invocation led by Vice President Urschel, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Levi D. If you would rise, please.
Sure. Let's go ahead and pray. Father, thank you for a new year. And God, just thank you for your providence of watching over us in our lives and providing us this world and a place to live in. Thank you for this country that we're in and our city as well. And God, that we have an opportunity to be part of the decisions that are made in our, in our community. And we just pray for wisdom tonight as we go over various items. Help us not to lean on our own wisdom, but just lean on you. And we pray for all our, our safety workers and maintenance workers and the guys that are out to take care of broken water mains and the folks that are on dispatch and the ones that are in the squad and stuff. And I just pray for wisdom for them. Many times, these guys have to make split second, these guys and yowls have to make split second decisions. And God, help them to, to, to do that well and to always look out for the best interest of the folks of our city, Father. And we just pray that you bring them safely home tonight. Praise things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Vice President Urschel, and Councilman D for the pledge. This time, we'll call our meeting to order. First item on the agenda is roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel.
Here.
Councilman Scrivens.
Where?
Councilwoman Dean.
Here.
Councilman Bram.
Here.
Councilman Dean.
Here.
Mayor May. Here. President Smith.
Here. All right, next on our agenda is opportunity for reorganization. This is a portion of the meeting once a year where we elected council president and vice president for the year 2023. So at this time, for protocol reasons, I will turn the gavel right here over to our city clerk. Do you actually want it, or are you good? Okay, so she's going to hear that.
Yes.
For tonight, and we will be voting on two positions. The position of council president, followed by the position of council vice president. Is that correct? Okay, great. So at this time, I'll turn the floor over to Michelle Johnson. Okay, thank you.
So just a brief disclaimer, every council member has met the eligibility requirements to serve as council president or vice president. If multiple nominations are presented, the nominations will be voted on in the order presented. They will not be voted on immediately after the nomination is made.
Okay, it's a little hard to hear you.
Oh, I'll talk louder.
Right.
They'll be voted on in the order presented until a sufficient number of votes are received for election, which is the majority of those present at the meeting. So in this case, all of you are present, so we need at least four affirmative votes to nominate, to elect somebody. If the first nomination receives a majority vote, no vote will be taken on the succeeding nominations. As Ms. Fisher shared in the handout earlier today for the rules of council, all council members must vote a or nay, and no member shall abstain from voting in the election of president or vice president. Once nominations are closed, I will conduct the necessary roll calls. So I will now entertain nominations for council president for 2023.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
I'd like to place in the nomination the name of Councilman Will Urschel.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will call for the Vice President Urschel.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Bram.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Are you under the bus?
Yes, I am.
President Urschel.
Okay. Congratulations, sir.
I will probably misspeak once or twice this evening, but I will try to remember.
Great.
So, and move on to vice president. Nominations are now available for council vice president for 2023. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
I nominate Councilman Wesley Smith for the office of Vice President of Xenia City Council.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Bram.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays. Vice President Smith.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you. So give us just a few minutes. We're going to change our seats here, and then we'll move on. Thank you.
The mayor says she has any access to the gavel, so.
I did bring my gavel, so.
Yeah, yeah. All right, we're back to our meeting. The next, yes. Next item on our agenda is approval of minutes of our December 28th, 2022 regular meeting. Do I have a motion for approval? Yes, Councilman D, has approved, do I have a second?
A second.
A second from the Vice President. Any discussion on the minutes? None heard, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Bram.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Abstaining, I was not at the meeting.
Did I call Councilman Dean? Sorry.
I'm staying.
Thank you. My order's all messed up.
Great. Next item is special presentations. We have none for tonight. Next item is audience comments. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to come and discuss an item with the council, feel free to come at this time. You have five minutes. Just please make sure that you introduce yourself and give us your name and street address. Anyone in the auditorium that would like to address us?
There is an email.
Yes, we did have one email that was sent to the city, and I'd like to go ahead and read that at this time. This is from Zavon Johnson, 1035 Meadow Lane in Xenia, Ohio. She says, "Like most residents of the city of Xenia, I got a letter from our trash collectors asking, amongst other things, that we not bag or bundle our recyclables. This is an attempt to ease the work later of separating collected recycling back at their facility. This is a request I do not intend to comply with until something is done on how they handle collection. What I witnessed more than once is that the trucks come by, lift up the containers with their special machines, and then they dump them into the trucks. The mean loose trash that ends up in the street is just left there for the citizens to pick up. The best way I know to avoid having to clean up after our trash collectors is to bag or bundle recyclables. The only alternative is to leave it in the street and make the neighborhood look trashy and uncareful. Can someone please address this problem with the trash collectors? If they want us to make their job of sorting the recyclables easier by not bundling or bagging, then they have to assure us that they will pick up the loose trash that falls, that fails to land in their trucks. They need to work a little harder to keep our streets trash-free." And then she had also attached.
A photo.
Hold it with the pre.
Zavon.
Zavon, thank you, thank you. And she provided, he, a gentleman, got it. He, he had also provided a, some pictures to go along with this as well, too. Great, good. Thank you for that input. Once again, for the folks in the audience, per our council rules, we don't respond to these comments at the, at the time that they're given, but we may have some comment with them at the end during our, our own discussion time or questions with the city staff. All right, at this time, the audience comments are closed. And we'll proceed on to old business. The first item is ordinance 2022-50, which was amending the official zoning map of the city of Xenia, Ohio to rezone the property at 24-72 Hill Street, totaling 0.84 acres, more or less, from I-1 Light Industrial District to B-2 Downtown District. At this time, we will have a public hearing before we take a vote on the, on the ordinance. And so I would, I would ask anyone that would like to speak in favor. The, the public hearing is now open. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance, please come to the podium. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to be, speak at, opposed to this ordinance, please come to the podium. And anyone that is neither in favor of or opposed, but would like to comment on the ordinance, please come to the podium at this time. So we have no speakers, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Councilman Scrivens, you introduced this at the last meeting.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I'd move for passage.
Great, do we have a second?
A second.
I'll second that.
I had a second from the mayor.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay.
Any discussion from the council members?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, Vice President.
Thank you. So planning and zoning endorse this. This is an excellent presentation by our city planner, Mr. Forscher. This is a great repurpose of this facility right here. This is really right off the bike path. It'll be used for usage of, for the bike path with a bicycle shop as well as units for renting, for lodging. So, and, and our city planner is here. I don't know if he wants to add anything to that, or are you good with that?
I'll see a question.
All right, just trying to ascertain the importance of this. I, I hope this goes through, and thank you very much.
Right. I'd also like to say that the, that the owners already started some cleanup of that area, and it's already, it just has a marked visual improvement over what was there before. And I think it'll be a great asset for that part of the, the city there, so. Great, all right, discussion is closed. Any, any other comments? Discussion closed, so go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Bram.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is ordinance 2022-51, amending and renumbering Title II and repealing chapters 1438, 1442, 1444, 1450, 1452, and 1454 of Title IV of Part 14, Building Housing Codes of Xenia City Code. At this time, we'll have a public hearing on this ordinance. Welcome to the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of the ordinance from the audience, please come to the podium at this time. Anyone opposed to the ordinance, please come to the podium at this time. Anyone that's neither in favor or opposed, but would like to have some comments on the ordinance, please feel free to come and to the podium at this time. Okay, no public comments, so we'll close the public hearing. And Councilman Scrivens, you also introduced this at the last meeting.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The legislative reviewing governor's committee had pondered this piece of legislation for a minute, and we're presenting it to the council for passage, and I move for passage.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any, any discussion from the council? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Bram.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the final item on our old business is ordinance 2022-52, amending sections 29, 8.01G of the fee schedule of the city, of the Xenia City Code. And we'll have a public hearing on that ordinance at this time as well. The public hearing is open. If there's anyone in the, in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance, please feel free to come to the podium at this time. Anyone opposed to this ordinance that would like to come and speak at this time? And anyone who is neither in favor of or opposed, but has additional comments, you may come and speak at this time as well. Not having any public comments, we'll close the public hearing. And Mayor Mays, you introduced this at our last meeting.
Sir, I'd like to move the passage, please.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Scrivens? Any comments from the, from the city council on this?
Yeah, I have a question. So this is for, more for city manager. So do we get a directive yet on what we're going to do as far as who takes the piece, starting with building inspection?
Yeah, I was going to provide an update on the city manager's report, if that's all right. I can park and address it now.
Yeah, you can do it.
Yeah, do it.
Thank you.
Councilman Scrivens, you?
Yeah, I just would want the city manager to comment. We're establishing a new program, and I'm going to get his blessings before I cast my vote.
Okay, so you wanted to talk?
Yeah, sure.
Sorry.
And we're speaking relative to a building inspection.
Right.
So we have been in discussions principally by our assistant city manager and been back, confirming back and forth with the county administrator as well as with the law director. I believe we will be able to arrive at a satisfactory outcome in terms of the transition plan. The, I think our intent is that any, any fees that had been assessed by the county for specific activities relative to building inspection functions, we would certainly not duplicate. But, but for open tickets that we would inherit, any additional, for example, for example, reinspection fees or any additional fees that would normally be part of the fee schedule would be levied as they would have been with the county. And we have, as of yet, not fully decided exactly how to approach this with NIC in terms of, of fee recovery for their costs, but again, still analyzing that. So I feel pretty confident this, this ought to work out pretty well.
Frank, that, that'll be a transitory time where that will be happening, and there'll be a time period where that will all be in the process, correct?
We are, we have been in the process of pursuant to the contract in effect, there is a 60-day notice period. We gave that notice in December, and we've been working toward a February implementation date. We will have a very robust public outreach process, and our intent is to work hand in hand with the county to minimize any inconvenience to customers. Part of what we are doing is reaching out as we are learning from the county what open tickets exist, working to reach out particularly for large projects, to have one-on-one communication with leaders individually or institutionally, to understand, you know, would you like for us to accommodate you to continue under the county, or do you want to come over to the, to the, you know, to the, to the new arrangement that we have? So, yeah, trying to meet customers where they're at, doing what's simplest for them, minimizing any inconvenience to the customer.
Councilman Scrivens, did I answer your?
Yes, sir, what's your transition period? How are we phasing it in?
So what will happen, we will, there has to be a hard deadline as to when the county will no longer continue taking any new applications. Yeah, so there'll be a, a hard cutoff date. We have picked that date. I'm not ready to announce it tonight because we're still shoring all, up all the details, but that would be in mid to late February. And again, we will have a very robust public outreach to, to inform folks. We're also working directly with local builders, local professional architects and so forth to make sure that they're aware of the transition timeline. Again, there would be select projects that, at the, at the request of the customer or as a result of discussions with the county, that we would allow to continue under the county's auspices. We would bring back a memorandum of, memorandum of understanding to establish, you know, some of those transitional details with the county that we would jointly execute to establish the expectations between the two. But we anticipate that most projects will come over onto the, under the city's arrangement, and then again, as of the date that we select in February, any new submittals would, would come through the new process.
Awesome, Mr. President. Now, the new chief building official, will his office be on Tyler Road? There's no space here at City Hall.
Yeah, so the, the way this will work, all of the inspection functions from, from, from a plan review perspective, their administrative tasks will be handled remotely through our contractor. We'll be able to take paper submittals here in our office. We'll have a fully electronic system that folks can submit electronically. These are enhancements that we're trying to make right out of the gate. They'll conform to, to our system and can be paired up with, with what we, what you can do in terms of digital applications for zoning. So we're trying to pair these things together to, to simplify the process for, you know, for local businesses and for local customers. As needed, we'll have space in this building if there are consultations and so forth that are needed, but we won't actually have any of our contractor staff working out of this building. So again, we've, we've, we've navigated this process to minimize any additional cost to the city. Based on projections that we have right now, we think we will be budget neutral on this. We think we can avoid the addition of any staff, and we're electing to try to move forward without the, any addition, any additional staff positions. If we find that the workload is just too robust, then we'll come back to council and have that discussion. But we're, we're, we're focused on customer service with the secondary intent of making sure that we're not creating a significant financial liability to the city while all the, at the same time, you know, providing just a better overall service. So again, a lot of detail's still in the works, and we're hoping within the next week or two to start releasing a lot of specific dates and, and instructions for the public at large.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, I have a comment and a question. So when we have our own building department ready to go, is that only for our city? As an example, Cedarville University's, but not a big building. Okay, they're in Cedarville, they're in Green County. Can they petition us to take their application, or do they have to go to the county?
So if you're in the village of Cedarville, they actually have migrated away from the county. Yellow Springs has as well. If you're a township in Ohio and a county provides that service, you have to use the county service. So for this change, this is for Xenia municipal property. So any properties where you have a building project and you live or your business operates and is located in the city of Xenia, this change would take effect next month, and, and, and again, it'll be a change in the service.
Got it, okay, thanks.
And I would just add, just to be clear, the, the, through the contractual arrangement, the chief building official, you, you are enabling us to appoint the contractor as a chief building official. So it's not an employee, it's a, it's a contract employee, has all the same rights and responsibilities, and, and will have accountability measures, you know, with that contractor. And they will provide all the plan review services, all the inspection services. The city will, of course, continue to provide fire code enforcement functions. And then there are other, other accessory functions relative to plumbing that, that Green County Public Health will do. And there are still some functions that the state of Ohio coordinates with us from, from an inspection standpoint as well. But, so for any residential buildings, any commercial buildings, any of those projects that, that we would have in our community, all those building inspection functions will come through the city with our contractor effective next month. And again, information coming soon.
Let me repeat your question.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Any other questions for the rest of the council? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Bram.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, we're moving over to new business. We have one item of new business, Resolution 2023-001, our first resolution of the new year, requesting the advance payment of 2022 tax settlements from the Green County Auditor. Mr. Assistant Finance Director, will you please give us some background on this?
Yes, thank you. Every year, we, the finance department, asks council to approve a resolution allowing us to make requests to the county in order to receive those property taxes earlier. Property taxes are normally distributed twice a year. This allows us to get some a little bit earlier as they're made, helping our cash flow for the year.
Great, good. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
You have a second?
Okay.
Any, any additional questions from council?
Sorry, you made that motion, please?
I did, ma'am.
Yeah, Councilman Bram. Any discussion from council? Okay, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Bram.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Okay, we're going to go to appointed officials reports. Madam Law Director.
I have nothing to add this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our law director tonight from the council? Thank you. Assistant Finance Director.
I have two items. One, I'll point out the income tax estimated payment deadline is quickly approaching. January 15th is your deadline to make any estimated payments for 2022 tax year. We have the ability to take payments here in the office, but Rita has a very robust online feature where you can go there and make your payments. So I encourage people to get those payments in. That'd be there 90% of what you would owe for the year or 100% of your taxes from the prior year in order to avoid any penalties or issues there, so. The second item being, we did have a discussion with Rumkey on the, the issue that was brought up. So we asked Rumkey to reinforce it with their drivers to be careful when they're dumping, check for, you know, trash that has fallen out. Yes, not bagging your stuff does help speed up the process, but I think the biggest concern there with the bags is it'll actually wrap around a lot of their machinery and cause damage to their process, which nobody wants that because they're trying to, you know, help the environment by recycling. But they will try to be more diligent.
Jason, so if I understand correctly, in our contract, if someone complains that they have not been picking that up, we can, has the city notify them, and they will come out under the contract to, to clean up? Or what's, what's the?
A lot of the complaints we'll have will be completely missed. Somebody didn't come by and get their can at all, which will notify them to go back out and pick those up. As far as, you know, a, a bottle or two here and there, I don't know that we can enforce that, but Law Director might be more knowledgeable on that contract, but.
We, we do have in the contract, if there are problems, we can address it. We made the contract a little more stringent than it has been in the past this time around, so I, I think there are ways we can address it through the contract.
Okay.
Council President, so I, I'd like to kind of throw in there, because I had witnessed that too. I was out walking the dog the other day, and I saw about the, the recyclables. And the issue, you know, all those bottles are empty, so they're very lightweight. Any gust of wind comes by and then they're, they are in the street. Not seen them ever get out of the truck to pick that up. I have seen them get out of the truck before and replace your container or move it or take the lid off or something like that. So it, it does seem like it, it is happening a little bit more. I, I just wondered if someone from the city can reach out to Mr. Johnson and, and let him know that the bag in the trash, in the recyclables is, is actually going to be an impediment for Rumkey because it, I've seen the, the machines work, it is going to wrap. I know they don't like the Walmart bags. People a lot of times will throw a few bottles on that, throw that in there. They're just as lethal as a trash bag. So I, I just don't think the public understands that as much, and maybe Mr. Johnson just not aware of that. So we can share that with him. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. We've already spoken to building inspection, but again, just want to reiterate, we'll be coming back with more information to public and, and an update to council probably in the next week, week and a half on, on where we're at with that. Not prepared tonight to make announcements, but did want to put a teaser out there that we have some really significant activity happening with the Xenia Town Square. We are a few weeks out, I think, from being able to begin to make some important announcements on the future of that project and that site, and looking forward to some action steps that we would recommend to council next year. So stay tuned on that. I know folks are expecting to see progress, and we respect that and, and want to continue to produce a positive result there. So more information coming on that soon. We are, of course, in the new calendar year and looking forward to all kinds of activities in 2023. We'll be shoring up dates for a variety of activities, but I did want to give council a heads up that we are, we've zeroed in on, on specific dates for several of our community-wide events. For the Spring Fling, I can't give you a specific date, but that will be April. The Harvest on Main and Oktoberfest joint activity will be on October 14th of this year. The Fireworks Festival will be on July 7th of this year, that's the first Friday in July. And then our Christmas Station will be on December 1st of this year. We will, are planning on hosting probably three Neighborhood Night Out events. We have not yet put tentative schedule out there for that pending additional communication with our, our, our partner interests that, that work with us for that particular activity. So lots of things coming up for this year, and as these dates firm up, we'll be putting that out there, but I wanted to give you guys a heads up so you could start to populate your calendars. And I think that is all I have this evening.
Great, thanks, Brian. Any questions for the city manager?
Those dates again, you rounded them off pretty quick.
Harvest on Main and Oktoberfest will be October 14th. Christmas Station will be December 1st. Fireworks Festival will be July 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And we've already planned that there won't be rain that evening, right?
Let's hope.[1778.84] Fireworks Festival will be July 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And we've already planned that there won't be rain that evening, right?
Let's hope.
Hey, some of us stood out in the rain.
It was a fantastic show.
Very personal.
And I'm glad we are planning on moving forward with that fireworks vendor again and have actually initiated the process of getting that contract lined up. So very good show and we'll just pray for.
It was a very impressive fireworks display.
It was.
So could I speak? I'm sorry.
Yes, Vice President, go ahead.
So I don't want to be Negative Nancy or anything, but the fireworks on July 7th. Okay, so it seems like a downer. The event's already happened and it's after the fact. Is that, I know how the calendar falls this year, it's really, really weird. Does that festival have to be that day or can we move it up a week and do it prior to 4th of July?
We made the policy decision with Rotary when we started a program that we wanted to stick with the same, not date, but the same week on a calendar basis so that we could plan years out. And the intent was to be able to get long-term contracts with the fireworks. We had a lot of debate about this issue because the 7th is obviously several days after the 4th. We made a decision initially not to go with the 4th, one, because of competition, two, because of cost, because that's always overtime, holiday overtime. So my short answer is we're pretty locked in. I know there are some concerns about it being so far off the holiday, but that, in part, that is why we don't call this a July 4th celebration, we call it the Sunny Cap Fireworks Festival. So yeah, it may not be a popular answer, but we're pretty locked in on that day.
Well, we won't be competing about the community.
Honestly, that was going to be my answer is it doesn't compete, which is why we tend to have a bigger crowd.
And this is the first year we've fallen on the 7th since we've brought this back. And yeah, it's a ways after the 4th, we recognize that, but that's something we had a lot of debate on when we set this rotation up, so.
I think Beaver Creek stood it that night, too.
Are they?
I'm just kidding. I get it, I get it. So there is a festival.
Yeah, so.
That Friday.
Yeah, so.
And Saturday or just that Friday?
Friday night, we will have all of the normal activities, both with their red, white.
Boom.
No?
No, sorry.
Red, white and boom.
No, no, no.
That's Columbus. I forget our title, but our downtown activities that will then extend down to the block. Yeah, yeah, so we will.
Is it just red, white, blue block party?
Thank you, red, white and blue block party, yes. Thank you, Mayor.
My mind went boom.
You can get all your 4th of July paraphernalia on sale at Walmart, right?
As I say, people like to shoot fireworks off the entire month of July, so people weekend.
And you're lawful now, Ken, you have the weekends before and after and the day of and yeah, so they're just.
People will have after parties. So my dog will be tortured for a week.
For extended periods. In fact, you probably, folks probably heard over New Year's, a lot of fireworks, those are completely lawful now pursuant to the new Ohio law and what you've approved for our community. And to this point, we have no, no reports of concerns to note.
Okay, great. Any other questions for the city manager?
Yep.
All right. Again, thanks, Brent. Let's go to council comments and reports. Someone called and the council members are giving reports from your committees as well that you would like to bring up. Do that at that time, so. Councilman Dean.
Nothing bad.
Councilman Brandon.
Nothing major. I'm ashamed that Ryan was out. I was really hoping to assign that task to him of responding to that email, but it looks like Jason, in his absence, has already stepped up to the plate, so.
Jason does most of the work there.
Jason is just a hurtling way. Ryan did reach out to.
Okay, all right. I would say we could just task Ryan since he wasn't here then, so nothing further for me.
Great, thank you, buddy. Councilman Dean.
I don't have anything further, thank you.
Mr. Vice President, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Few items. I had spoken directly to the person who had authored the email, Mr. Zevan Johnson. He's a former band director for Xenia High School. He was in the Pinecrest District. And I told him, I said, I had invited him to come in person and eyeball to eyeball with us, but his schedule didn't permit it. So I told him to send an email to our city clerk and we'll read it into the record, so that's that. In passing, though, I told him, I said, you're not the only one who has to follow the trash truck, especially on Monday days, and make sure that litter is not strewn throughout the community. So I told him, I said, I'm in charge of my block, I make sure all the trash cans are back and there's no litter in the street. That's my job. So everybody else, do what you have to do to make sure your living space stays litter-free. So that's my spiel and I'm sticking to it. Channel 5, I get a lot of calls about that. The city of Xenia does not own Channel 5. The Spectrum, whatever communications charter, whatever their name is, they own it. So as soon as they find out what the problem is and they fix it, we'll be back on Channel 5, so just so you'll know. Like to also, I guess I'll register a complaint. On 4th of July and New Year's Eve, I have a problem in my neighborhood with gunfire. And I called this past time on New Year's Eve and I talked to the lady at dispatch. I said, we have automatic weapons fire here. Are you sure it's not firecrackers? I said, ma'am, I said, I know the difference between a firecracker and a gunshot. I said, listen, and said, pop, 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 pop. I said, does that sound like a firecracker to you? I said, thank you very much. And she wanted to go into an extemporaneous discourse and I wasn't having it, period. I'm not going to have automatic weapons being fired just on a whimsical. So whatever you have to do to intervene and interdict in that, that's what I'm about. And I can give you some names and addresses. We have to say goodbye to Franco Harris. He was the main guy in the Steelers' run for four straight Super Bowls and we worked for years to get one for the thumb and we finally did that. But Franco had to go around the field his last time, so we had to say goodbye to number 32, Franco Harris. So Franco, thank you, sir, for all of your memories. We had to say goodbye this past week to Barbara Walters, who made a striking difference in news for women. So all the women who sit on the TV today, thank Barbara Walters for cracking that glass ceiling. Have to also say our final goodbyes to Mr. Terry Byrd, we called him Baby Byrd, and have to say goodbye to one of my classmates, his name was Jerome Savage, we called him Jerry. And Jerry Savage, the nickname Milkshake will be with you ad infinitum forever, so Milkshake, we hate to see you go. And then finally, Mr. President, just want to say thanks to all of the people who voted for the city charter amendments. The city charter now is in good hands. It's the best charter in the state of Ohio bar none. I know it is, because we worked on it for three years to make sure it was. So at this point, starting in 1989, I started working on the Xenia City Charter. And here it is, 2023, and I finally got an end product that will stand the test of time. So with that, Mr. President, I yield back now, thank you very much for the time.
Mr. Vice President?
All right, thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to thank President Urschel for taking the seat of presidency. I've had the enjoyment of doing this for three years and it's not that I didn't want to do it, I just felt it was time for a break. Some of you guys know that know me, know I own a local business here in town that has been very blessed. Had a record year last year, better than pre-COVID numbers. And as an employer, you miss out a lot of time with your family. Office of presidency is not a lot more different than the council here, but I just wanted to take that off my plate this year, so I appreciate you stepping up and doing that. I'm still here to serve. And one of the questions that actually Assistant Manager Jared had asked me at our last meeting is if we were going to keep our subcommittees the same. So that's your decision there. I kind of told him, I didn't think we were probably going to make any adjustments and it was probably best to keep everybody, all the committees that they're on now and the subcommittees that they're on, but that's something that they'll have to reach out to you. And I knew there was an email from Brent today wanting to get moving on that, so I would recommend that you make those appointments at their next meeting if you can. And would that be soon enough?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're looking at February for our Christmas committees.
So one thing, and the law director sent me an email today, because I'm in constant communication with you guys and with President Urschel on a regular basis, but one thing that we had talked about was an exploratory committee for streets, is that correct? So what is the steps that we need to do to get that going?
That would be Section 12 of your roles of council, that is what we would consider select committee. It's kind of the same way you appoint the charter review committee. You could create a streets committee, you do that by resolution, you set forth in the resolution what the purpose of that committee is. If you want that committee to make a report to you, then you give them a deadline of when that report, you set the number of members of that committee. If there's any particular things you want, we do that all by resolution. The president of council makes the appointments of the members, but those appointments have to be approved by the rest of council by resolution. We can do that all in one, but that's, that is how you create a select committee.
All right, cool. So I guess the next step would be to open up that invitation to citizens, they want to contribute to.
Well, I think we need to, we need to put the definition of the purpose of the committee.
And that we're doing the specific.
We can, staff can prepare the resolution that you need. We would just need some idea from council. And I mean, you can discuss it right here, right now, what you want the purpose of the committee to be, how many members do you want, if you want them to make a report to you, when do you need that report by? We could then prepare that resolution to bring back, the president can make his recommendations on membership, which you then could approve as part of that resolution. But we would need that from you to be able to prepare the resolution. What do you want the committee called? What do you want them to do? If you have a report you want that, when do you want it by and how many members do you want?
So I would leave that up to you guys to decide.
Sure. So I think we'll address it in a work session with the council and, I'm sorry, any other comments?
On streets, that was it. Just had a couple other things real quick, so.
You're sitting in the vice president's chair.
Well, I'll tell you what, it's really weird, guys, because I'm not used to sitting here, I haven't sat here in about three years, so I'm not used to getting called first, so you know, I might have to go peek. But no, I really look forward to 2023. I enjoy working with city staff, continue to do that. I enjoy working with the council we have. I feel like we're very blessed, we have a very diverse group here and we're getting things accomplished as best we can with the resources that we're gifted. And other than to wish everybody Happy New Year, I really appreciate the fact that people watch our meetings. People come up to me at Walmart and they know me, I don't know them, but they know because they watch and they, so they'll address me by name. Just, of course, the only other thing is everybody knows I'm a huge Bengals fan, big game Sunday, and drive by my house, see a lot of orange and black, but I was at that event, the game June 2nd against the Bills, and as a spectator, we were kind of.
January 2nd.
January 2nd, what did I say?
June.
Oh, January 2nd, sorry, misspoke. January 2nd, huge home game, packed stadium, standing room only, people paid hundreds and hundreds of dollars for tickets and eight minutes into the game, it just fell apart. And I do believe that was the right decision to postpone the game. I don't personally agree that it should have been canceled, but it is what it is. But I'm so thankful Damar Hanlon's better and I, you know, other than prayers for him, you know, I just looked up Cincinnati because those players had to witness that on a very personal level. So again, hoo day and I'll shut up, thank you.
Let me hear.
Thank you. Several things that I'm reporting on, MVR PC, that I have been tasked to go to, that was actually canceled for January. Braca, I'm sorry, I apologize, XREC. I'm working on it. XREC was also canceled due to lack of agenda items.
XREC stands for?
Xenia Recreation. Excuse me?
End Events.
End Events, excuse me. And then the other thing that I am responsible to attend is mayors and managers, that was last night, the city manager and I went, it was in Troy, they hosted. I don't know that there was anything as far as the legislative update that necessarily, I say nothing that comes to mind. The program was, a woman now is doing a program specifically with service dogs and the conversation revolved around if our community, if all of our municipalities should have a public policy. Obviously, there's ADA trumps everything, but she talked a lot about having public policy for your different venues, your different businesses, in what they allow and certain preferences given to service dogs versus, one of the big topics that's come up since COVID is the increase in patio dining and getting the dog to the patio, should it go through the restaurant, those types of things. So it was, it was an interesting conversation, I don't know that there's a lot to, it's something that we both said is probably a conversation that could be had for this community, given our partnership and involvement with Four Paws, but yeah, it was interesting. A couple of things that I wanted to note, I wanted to congratulate Eric Swanson and his retirement after 25 years on our fire department, our fire department, was able to attend his retirement party at Station 31. It was just, it was very moving to hear just his commitment to this community and to the fire department, and I know this is going to be a hard transition for him. On January 6th, Amy Howard invited me out to speak to all of the third graders at To Come So. It was very interesting, they wanted to know everything from if I knew the president, they asked me how much I get paid and they wanted to know if I had any special people, they said, do you have any servants at your home, any butlers? No.
Did they ask you about your office here?
No, oh yeah, they, I actually told them I don't have an office and they were shocked and appalled and could not wrap their heads around that.
But you know about a mailbox.
They was also asked if I had a golden toilet, so there you go. These are the ranges of the questions that we talked about, but we did have a good conversation about how local government in Xenia works, just like their classroom, is related to a bigger school, which is related to all the elementary schools, which is related to the system in Xenia, and so on and so forth. And so it was a very good, we pieced it together of how local government works and how all your decisions have to be in mind of the bigger picture. So it was a lot of fun. This is just a personal note on, also on the 6th, I had a chance to be a part of a special event that was in Springdale and I wanted to mention it because they inducted my father-in-law, he passed one year ago, one year ago tomorrow will be his passing. He was inducted into their Recreation Centers Hall of Fame, but it was a, it was a neat evening because I had an opportunity to speak with their mayor, who's been mayor for 28 years. That man has a lot of stories, as you can imagine, so Mayor Webster, he did a great job. On the 7th, as you all know, we took part in the council retreat. On the 10th, January 10th, Tony Vitale is now a sergeant here in our police department, so was able to participate in his swearing-in, had a chance to pray for him and his family. It was exciting to see that. Already mentioned on the 11th, mayors and managers. Today, I had a board meeting specifically with Impact Xenia, they are kind of the new umbrella over Living Well Clinic, and I wanted to mention that because they have a volunteer, Amy Thompson. There's, I believe it's December, this happened in December, is Free Clinic Awareness Month in Ohio. So they were in Columbus along with 67 other free clinics in all of Ohio and Amy was named the Volunteer of the Year by the Charitable Health Network, which is free clinics of Ohio. So our own Amy here in Xenia is Volunteer of the Year, she's put a lot of time and effort into Living Well Clinic, so I'm excited to see what Impact Xenia is doing, they have a big announcement coming soon about some great things that they've been awarded and I'm not at liberty to say, but they've, they're being recognized through some grant funding, it's very exciting. Also today, I took part in a community forum with the library, just to talk about some of the ways we want to see partnerships grow within the municipality, within our schools and within our businesses and how can we grow that partnership. There's really great input on how to work with our businesses and help see them succeed in some things that the library offers, but also then just on that one-on-one patron library and relationship and the things that they're doing here in our community and working with kids and adults and programs and tutoring and helping people with taxes, a free program that they'll help people with their taxes. So it's, it's really exciting to see what they're doing. Also had a chance today to speak with some nursing students from Wright State University. specifically, um, public, public involvement, what does that mean if you're working at an ER and that you're working with folks that you're going to see, um, in that type of crisis situation, but how do you, we talked about the issues of when you discharge and somebody doesn't understand what they need to do and why they end up back there within that thirty-day window, we talk about a lot, that's, that's, it's a, it's a problem for the city, it's for EMS, it's a problem for the hospital, it's a problem ultimately though for that person who doesn't understand the care needs that they are supposed to be following, so it was, it's really, um, I love doing that every year, because it's a chance for me to say, this is what we see, these are the mental health, the physical health challenges that we're having in our community, and here's what you need to be learning if you're going to be a nurse and you're participating in our healthcare program here in our community, so it was a great day. Um, and I believe, I think that's all I have.
Great.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Just a few comments, uh, with the last Xenia Community Schools Board meeting, and I just want to congratulate Josh Day on being elected again as the president of the, uh, school board, and George Leitner as vice president for this year. Uh, one particular item coming out of that that would be of interest to us as well, is that they are planning on bringing in the, uh, May election, uh, once again, uh, their income tax, uh, petition back, back up as well, so, uh, they voted on that, uh, as a school board, uh, this last time. Uh, I commend our city staff for the support we got at our, at our council office site with the staff, we focused, uh, majority of our time on long-term street maintenance, and, uh, the staff did a wonderful job of presenting the state of all, all of the existing streets in the city, uh, projected costs for repair for those and what ongoing, what an ongoing repair program would look like. Uh, as far as I know, the city's never had a, uh, long-term, uh, maintenance program planned out for all of the city streets. Again, we had a lot of robust discussion about how we would, uh, what, so, uh, it wasn't much discussion about the cost, the cost is the cost. Asphalt is asphalt, and, uh, one of our bigger challenges here in the city is that a good part of our city streets as of today are either in poor or failed condition, and that's going to be a fairly large cost to rehabilitate those streets. But we, the first step in any twelve-step program is you gotta admit you got a problem, and then, then you can go address it. So we had a really good discussion of what the problem is, the cost to, uh, manage that, and that's not going to be addressed in a week or a month or a year, we're, we're looking at probably a twenty-year, uh, cyclical program that we will put in place, and, uh, more substantial cost here to get us caught up, but then once that's in place, that should be something that, that will help us maintain our streets, and then also as we bring new neighborhoods in, we would also plan for the maintenance of those streets of those neighborhoods as well, too. So I just want to commend, uh, our city engineer and, uh, finance folks and folks on, uh, ran out of your, your, your shop and stuff, we got all the information we needed for that, and I just want to thank the council, we had some good, robust discussion about ways that we could tackle this from a funding, uh, perspective, we'll have some more work sessions on this as well, too, but I think we have a, an initial strategy we'd like to pursue, some more to come from that, but, um, I'm confident by the, uh, by the end of this year, that, uh, we'll, we'll have a strategy for the long-term maintenance of our, of our roads in the city, and, uh, and that, that's something we desperately needed for a long time, and, uh, we'll, we'll be needing to come back, uh, to parts of the community in, in specific areas, as well as in general, to look at the funding for that, but more, more to come from that. So anyways, just want to thank everybody, all the council for coming, participating and diving in with us on that, and for all, all the staff and the, the time that they put into supporting, that was, it was just, it was a great meeting and gave us all the information we needed there, yeah. So, uh, at this time, uh, pursuant to, uh, how to revise code, uh, we need to go into executive session specifically to look at the purchase or sale of, uh, property within the city.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Before we adjourn to executive, uh, just wanted to say that, uh, I had forgotten to give our condolences to the family of, uh, Ms. Joanie Thomas Fight Moore, so Lisa and Lukey, we will extend your heartfelt sympathy.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel.
And the Xenia High School football team, we're ten and O, they received their rings yesterday in a ceremony at the high school, so even freshmen, you see them with their big rank, rank bigger than mine, so. I'm just happy for them, thank you, sir.
Good for them, good. So, uh, just to let the folks in the, uh, public audience know that after going to executive session, we do not plan on coming out of executive session doing any follow-on business here for the city, so we will probably adjourn coming out of executive session and, uh, and conclude our business for the evening. So I, do I have a motion for going to executive? With the mayor, another second. All right, let's call the vote. No, the Vice President.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.[1782.80]